Good evening. Thanks everyone for coming out. We have a quick workshop, hopefully doesn't take too long to go over the few things we do have to discuss. First thing up is the proposed ordinance adopting a 5% allowance of riverboat funds be used to supplement operations of the city. And the second part of that is dedicating 50% of riverboat revenues to increase the rainy day fund balance up to a minimum of $6 million. So this was the ordinance that I introduced several months ago, right at the beginning of the year, not too long after we were entering COVID season, I guess. And the purpose behind it was to ensure that the city has money on reserve in order to deal with things such as COVID that came out of the blue that no one expected. So as it currently stands, our rainy day fund has little to nothing in it. If there's anything in it at all, I haven't checked, but I didn't. The last time I inquired about it, it didn't seem that there was anything in there. So part of the motivation was to take a portion of what we received in revenues from the riverboat and apply it to a rainy day fund up until it got to a certain level. So if it's, just to use easy numbers, if it's $100, $50 would go to this rainy day fund, $50 would be available to use until it made it up to the level that we're desiring it to be at. Once it reaches that level, 100% of what we get from riverboat would be available for the city to use as needed. So it's not like we're taking away anything. It's just setting up a reserve. So in instance, that something such as COVID does happen, we're able to operate the city with without any lapse in service. So that was the main driver behind that. And the other part of it, only allowing 5% of the riverboat funds to be used for operations as far as budgetary purposes. As of right now, the current policy, I think it's 20% of the riverboat revenues are to be used for operations, but it far exceeds that as a practice. And I think that if we lower that amount, it would at least get it to a desirable amount and work toward using it less and less. So we're less dependent on the riverboat for operations because as we seen, if it goes away, well, we could be headed to a place of dire straits. So just trying to be forward thinking and making sure the sustainability of the city is in place in case some other instance like this was to occur. No one saw COVID coming. No one anticipated that we would ever have a time where the riverboat wasn't there providing revenues to us. So with that being said, I'll open the floor up for any discussion about it or whatever information the Controller's Office or the administration has to add.
I'm sorry, Mr. President. We were consulted, there's not enough seating. I didn't catch the last thing you said.
I'm opening the floor up to your discussion. If you guys have something to say why we shouldn't do this or maybe the numbers to provide some better insight on it, we're open to hear that.
Mary Lynn created summary sheets of the budgetary cost by department and then by code. Did each of you receive one of these? If you didn't...
Mr. Mayor Perry, if I'm not mistaken, was that the email that we just received after 4:00 PM today? We do not have hard copies of those. If you could, have copies, please. No, you just, you know, you handed out that part. I have the salary.
Okay.
I have a comment about your ordinance, if I can ask a question.
Which, the proposed ordinance?
The 5% riverboat.
Yes.
That one that you just mentioned. All right. So you're saying that we need to save money so that we can work on operations, but if it's going to impact our operations, I don't see how we're going to save money for later when we can't do operations right now.
Okay, so if we take money and not allow the administration to add it to a budget that's submitted to the state, the money doesn't go away. And for whatever reason, if the money is needed for something, then they have an additional appropriation like they do all the time, it's pretty standard. They come to us and say, hey, council, we need X, Y, Z for this project, or we need to boost up this fund for this reason. It comes through the council, we take it to a vote, and it gets approved or not approved.
Okay, but right now you say we're using 20% of the riverboat funds?
No, there's a...
More.
No, more.
But let's just say we're at 20, let me, let's just say we somehow rapidly get to 20. Wouldn't you say we better idea to gradually get to this 5% instead of just cutting at the time where our income is even lower than it's been before?
Okay, so this was proposed months ago, and if that was something that you or any other council person desired, no one has tried to make any amendments. So 5% was a guideline that I started with because I know we needed to have something in place. This is why we've had these discussions, to see what would be more feasible. If 5% is a little too steep to start off with and we want to gradually go that way, okay, let's word it that way so it does it automatically and not at once. But to just sit and do nothing was not something I was willing to do.
Counsel, Lady Ziegus?
Mr. President?
If you would, if you would give us a few minutes to go through the numbers, I think you'll see the impact of what this ordinance will have on the operation of the city. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Just one question for Mary Lynn. Where do we stand presently and what is the amount that we use of riverboat money?
I think I'm, I have to lay out my worksheet. I think if you look at that worksheet, right now to fund the general fund, and it's on this, that first page, it's 33, it's on, no, this one, you don't have the whole thing. So on the worksheet that I have, it has the general fund budget approved by the council. I think you'll see I've got on that second part, you can see the amount that you approved to transfer to fund the general fund. And we needed that 3 million, what the number to fund the general fund. Otherwise, we couldn't have funded the general fund and submitted a budget. So that represents 33%. There it is. That's my number. So that's the top part of that second page is the actual, my glasses on, is the actual, there's your, there's our estimated revenue for the riverboat, which is what is in your approved budget. This is the approved budget transfer to general fund, the 3,191, and we needed that to fund the general fund. So if you were to have this ordinance in place for this budget, just as a scenario, because that's all I've got to go by, if you put the 5%, you would have only allowed us to transfer 487,000, which would have meant you need to cut the general fund by So where would those cuts come from?
That does not mean that, and you're misrepresenting.
Okay, then maybe, oh, maybe, no, maybe I'm...
Yeah, what it means is the administration would need to come to the council to use these revenues. The money doesn't go away.
But for us to submit a budget, it has to be a balanced budget. So we would, we have to have that, that transfer in our approved budget that we send over to the state. Otherwise, we don't have a balanced budget.
Okay, I get that part. So you guys are the financial experts. I mean, there's probably a quarter million dollars worth of salaries in your office alone. So to say that you guys can't figure out how to make these numbers work without using so much of the riverboat money to supplement, that really gives me some pause because I'm like, well, what are you guys doing? If this isn't what you do, then who does it? Is this something that we should hire financial professionals to do?
Well, I think that the second page, you can see where I put the salaries. So you, you went through the budget, we went through that process where you went through everybody's in the general fund, every department's general fund operating budget, and you made, we, the Controller's Office had already made some cuts. Then the council went through and made what you felt like were appropriate cuts if possibly they had too much in, you know, their, their fuel or electricity. And what's, to make a $2 million cut would mean that we would have to cut salaries, which I feel that the mayor feels like every, we have personnel, was a plan in cutting personnel, that every, every employee is needed and important. And on that second sheet, I'm showing you exactly where the second worksheet that I sent over, all the salaries that are in the general fund. And the only place you could make that kind of substantial cut would be to fire and police salaries. That's the only department that's going to be able to have, to make the cuts necessary to only allow a 5% riverboat transfer to budget the general fund.
Okay, that's, that's your, that's your assessment of it. But I mean, there are other departments that could be, I mean, we've, we've funded positions that aren't even filled right now. So those things could be removed in order to work back towards some positive numbers. So I understand what you're saying. I know the police and fire are our biggest expenses, and I would never say just go fire policemen and firemen. But there's also some streamlining that can be done within the administration if, if it was the desire of the administration to make sure that this budget was balanced and lean. But it doesn't seem like that's the desire. The desire is just to use the riverboat money just because it's there, when the riverboat money was there for the city as a whole and the council of us to represent the residents of the city, we have to make sure that it is being distributed properly, not just to make sure some employees have jobs. I mean, no one wants to see anyone lose their jobs, but the times that we're in, this is what's happening right now because it's necessary. Everything is streamlined and leaning up as far as operationals. But to say that it's not possible, I find it hard to believe and I can't accept that because the money doesn't go away. And if there is any need to have any extra monies, the money is still, it doesn't go away. The council can appropriate whatever is necessary if we agree to it or if the majority of us agree to it. So the way that, this is for the public, I want the public to understand, if we decide that part of the money is out of the administration's control, it does not mean the money goes away. The council of nine is the fiscal body of the city, and it's our function to manage and make sure the money is being spent properly. And if we think that it's not being spent that way, it's our decision and our job and responsibility to make sure that it is. And I'm not giving a knock to the administration, and I'm not saying that, you know, these are just my thoughts. So I'm not saying that this is the opinion of every council person, but this is my assessment of it because I understand what my role as a council person and being a fiscal officer of the city.
Mr. President, if I may, we, we understand what the responsibility of the, of the council is. We understand that and we respect that. If you will let us go through our numbers, then you will see the impact or you will hear the impact of what we're talking about.
For sure.
To go immediately to 5%. We can't cure the excessive spending habits of previous administrations over the last 23 years in one year. We can't do it without being devastating. As Mary Lynn mentioned, we put these sheets together, and if you look at salaries and benefits, that is 87% of the city budget.
The general fund.
The general fund budget, the general fund budget, that is 87% of that. And at least 67% of that is police and fire. The other cuts that you talked about making by your 5% target, those are just nickels and dimes. What, the, the big cut is going to be made in police and fire. So if you take that 87%, which is $20,932,726, and you cut that by 5%, that is $2,704,475. That, that's, that's a big chunk. And that would have to be taken out of police and fire.
Okay.
So just simple numbers, just please give me a couple minutes to finish, then we can, then you can chew on the numbers. But no matter how you chew on them, they're going to taste the same. You take that, and the cuts are going to be made by police and fire. So I just, in police and fire. So I just took a look at that, that $2,704,000 divided it by two, because half of it's going to come out of police, half of it's going to come out of fire. And that divided by two is $1,352,238. And translating that into policemen and firemen, the average police officer per year, their liability, their monetary liability to the city is $109,000. That's their wages plus all of their benefits. So if you divide that, half of that 200, 2.7 million, which is 1.3 million, if you divide that by 109,000, we're going to lay off 13 police officers. And then the other, the firefighters would be affected the same way. It would be another $1.3 million divided by 101,000, which is a total impact monetarily to the city each year for each firefighter, salary and benefits. That's 14 firefighters. Now, if, if this ordinance would go into effect immediately, the next pay period, we would be sending termination letters out to police and fire. And I seriously believe that if we've got to ratchet this thing, we can't do it all at once, it just won't work. If we do 5%, then I don't think anybody sitting in this room is going to be reelected in 2024. The citizens are going to be outraged.
Well, I'm hoping that no one here is doing their job with the guise of it's going to get them reelected because they should resign now because that's not what you're here for. You're here to do the job that you were elected for right now. And the way you're kind of trying to brand this as it's an attack on police and fire is kind of disrespectful, and I'm taking offense to it. So I just want to ask this one question. Okay, the estimated riverboat revenue for next year is $9,750,000, correct?
Correct.
Okay, what was the, what was the riverboat revenue for this year that we've received?
For this year, I don't, I haven't looked at it.
Was it $9 million?
I mean, it's, no, no, it's not because of COVID.
Okay, was it close to $9 million?
It wasn't because of COVID.
Did you have to lay off these 26, 27 individuals, police and fire, that you're speaking of right now?
Well, no.
Okay, but...
Number one, because we're going to get COVID month, we're going to get COVID expect, reimbursements.
Okay, but without that money here, if we didn't get it in, and you were still able to operate, so to say we have to fire and send out, I mean, termination letters for 13 police and 13 fires, just, that's just being disingenuous.
No, it's not, it's real.
But we also have, I also have...
We haven't done it yet.
There's a bail, there's a balance in the riverboat also.
We got a little over $6 million this year from the riverboat fund, 6.7, something like that. I remember discussing that number. The reason we didn't have to lay off police and fire was because we got federal funding to help with police and fire, and also because the COVID brought us to a screeching halt. There was over a half a million dollars in, in budgeted money for the park department that we, that we were able to draw back in.
Correct, we didn't lay off.
So were there, were there less calls for service for police and fire during this time?
I'm sorry?
Were there less calls for service for police and fire during this time?
Less calls?
Yes.
I was gonna say now.
So they were still just as busy as they, as they've been in previous years. So saying that we have to ratchet down doesn't apply to police and fire. But I mean, City Hall's been open the entire time but closed to the public, with I don't know how many people are on staff there. No one was laid off, very minimal staff was laid off and furloughed there. So you can't say that police and fire is the only place where this money could be recovered. And like I said, we haven't received almost $10 million this year, and there's no doom and gloom scenario like we got at the beginning of the year when we first asked these questions.
Well, we, we got a lot of points here, don't we, that were brought up so far? So one thing that I want to bring up is the mayor referenced the last 23 years, okay, of overspending and that we can't make it up. Well, what I want to know is what happened to the implementation of ordinance 4285 filed on 2014 on the rainy day fund, on unencumbered funds? What, what's happened in the last six years, why no money is in that rainy day fund? Okay, don't answer that. Now, excuse me, I got the floor. Quit interrupting. Is this, what happened with the case on Murphy, and we never had an update on going after his bond or any wrongdoing or malfeasance on spending of money? What, what happened with all that? We never got a report to the city council.
Because it's still being reviewed. It's with our insurance company.
Well, we haven't, we haven't even got...
Wait a minute, now you asked me, yes, my question, allow me to answer.
Well, let's do one at a time. Mayor Perry was answering your question, Councilman.
That request is still with General Insurance, our carrier. They are investigating what we can do. It's not dead, it's still with them.
Okay, with that being said, and...
Thank you, Mr. President.
There's no money in the, in the rainy day fund that was passed in 2014, and I don't know who was checking up on everything, but Mr. Perry, Mayor Perry, you were the president of the city council at that time.
13 and 14, yes, sir, I was.
So what I'm referencing to is when I was on the council, when this riverboat was brought to us and we voted on it, and when I left office, there was like 12, 14 million dollars in there. And yes, we can't, we can't make up for whatever monies that were spent on overspending, but there's one thing we can do, is that we need to say that we're going to put money in there. And I think it's very ingenuous on your part in the Controller's Office to come here and just reference that we're going to lay off the police department and we're going to lay off the fire department when there's all kinds of other alternatives. And I think you're using scare tactics in that the sky is falling. And I don't believe it is, and we made it through COVID, and there's, we need to have a reserve. That's the bottom line. And you want to dress it up like the sky's fallen, I'm not going for it. Because I know that there's extra money in there, and that's just like all the money that's in the general fund on professional services should be stripped in a separate line item made for those funds to stay in there. There's probably a half a million or maybe $750,000 right there, at least. So I believe that when the administration wants to negotiate, then we'll get something done. But until that time, the council is going to have to take the position that we need to save money. And I don't care how you want to dress it up, we need to have a rainy day fund. We need to have money in that rainy day fund. And all the money that's not spent during the year, and we got to tell these departments that if you don't need it, you don't buy it. And it comes back to us. That's the bottom line. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, Councilman Mack.
I'm going to be real short with this, but I'm frustrated because I've been through budgets before, and budgets are, in my way of putting it, just two things, process and projection. There's a process to get to the numbers. I'm going to just throw this out there and see if anybody disagrees with, if this process would have been filed, followed, all of this could be academic, because it sounds like there's a lot more to this budgetary conversation than I'm aware of. And I really don't want to be aware of it, to tell the truth. I'd like to stay to the subject, but process, projection. So if we actually identified those budgetary shortfalls and just took anybody, let's say Chief Campbell and whoever's salary in the police department and fire department, just made them up. Here's the dollar amounts were short outside of the council, increasing our riverboat fund by 13% because the 20% per ordinance is 13% more. So there was a 13% need to be brought. Now, if that would have just been brought before the council with a simple, the necessity to fire or eliminate positions within the fire and police is imminent, folks, because of COVID. We are requesting a such and such percentage increase to the riverboat fund with future desires with you to manage this fund unlike it's been managed for yada, yada, yada years when we get through this. Would that have satisfied everything? Because I really cannot believe that there's one member of this council that would have looked and said, no, we want those guys fired. So the money would have gotten there, the projections would have still been 13%. There'd have been a lot less contention, a lot less, I don't know, conversation as if some of these facts are projections. We haven't actually cut anything. We haven't cut a nickel from nothing. This council hasn't, in reality. We've cut from a projection. So I would hope that we can turn the temperature down and actually get back to numbers that are projected and we would desire, and we all know that nobody's going to be right, you know, whoever, whoever projects anything on payroll, overtime, or income, it's a best guess, honest projection. And we should stay on that subject, try to find common ground on that subject, and as we used to do in the basketball team, close the door and have our own fights and come out as a team that's going to represent the city. So that, that's my suggestion, that we can agree that, come before the council, ask for the increase that's necessitated so that chaos doesn't fall upon the city, and dare the council to do something silly like get rid of fire departments, and dare us to do it. I don't think we could possibly come up with a solution like that. So that's all I have. I hope we can get to better conversations here.
Thank you, Councilman. I did have one other question. I definitely want to thank Councilman Mack for that, because sometimes cooler heads need to prevail. If not, if not 5%, then what would you guys suggest?
Well, in the budget, I mean, we put in the amount of riverboat transfer that was needed to, to fund the general fund. I mean, that's, I would hope, and I think we also made enough, obviously, we've got a million dollars going to the rainy day fund, so we did hear the comments about the rainy day fund. That's why it's in this year's budget, to put, to put the dollars in there. I think we all, we had some conversations earlier today that yes, we would like to work on not relying so much on the riverboat and whether or not we can stair step this down and maybe try to make an effort for 2022 to possibly, obviously, get that number down below the 33% that it's now. 2022 to possibly, obviously, get that number down below the 33% that it's now, and we can all work together. Because I really do think we all want the same ends, honestly. We're not, we shouldn't be battling against each other. I just know that when, when reading this ordinance, when it was 5%, I was, my only intent on these worksheets to show that 5% just can't work, we can't submit a balanced budget to the state if we are not allowed, if, if, if we were only allowed to show a 5% transfer from the riverboat. We just couldn't do it. We would have to cut from, significantly cut from salaries, and really, like I said, like the mayor said, the only place to really make those significant cuts really are police and fire. But we have to, we have to have a balanced budget to submit to the state. So that includes transfers from other funds, or is part of that balancing of the budget. We can't have a shortfall and say, oh, well, we're gonna ask for an additional appropriation throughout the year. That doesn't work.
Okay.
So.
So if the riverboat revenue was zero, what would be the recourse?
Then it would be, I don't know.
Okay.
I mean, we're lucky we have river, I mean, I think we, I think a lot of.
You guys would work the numbers to make it work?
Yeah, we would.
Okay. So you just, you just answered the question. Councilwoman Dabney?
Um, couple of things. So, um, with the estimated river, riverboat revenue, um, is that conservative?
I believe so. That's, that's the number that Yvonne had in the budget, yes. I'm just taking that straight from the, the approved budget.
Okay. So, um, couple of things. So, I don't know what year it was, but we went through that process and creating that stair-step down before when I was on the council, and when we got down to the 20%. And it was one of those things that, um, operations got up, got pretty high. Um, Chuck, he vetoed us when we did it, when we passed it, we overrode the veto to get it down to the 20%. Um, there was a lot of things going on with the circuit breaker and, um, property tax, and so I understood, you know, you know, but I don't know how it built back up to the way we've been spending, but I just know what the intent was when I was on the council was that 20% is reasonable, um, considering. And, and like I said, there were some outside factors with property tax. I'm okay with stepping it down based on what, um, has been shown. But the key is, uh, I know what you stepped into, so I get that, no fault of their own. But, you know, a 10%, a 10% cut across everything, is that really the way you, that's just like setting everybody equal? When everybody is not equal within the city on what they have in their departments and the resources that they have, that's just the easy way of saying, I'm not gonna, um, I'm not gonna look at everything and, and really analyze what needs to be cut. I'm just gonna do it across the board. Most businesses don't do that. They look at the departments that got fat, and they get rid of the fat. That department, we just went through, we just went through a voluntary severance situation at NYSOR, same thing. It's one of those things that certain departments were targeted because they, the overhead was too high. Did we even consider anything like that, um, Mayor Perry? Or did we just decide that was gonna be a 10% cut across the board? Did we do any type of analysis on cross-training? If these ministerial positions can be combined, if one office can use multiple people to do the same job? Did we do any of that preparing for the budget that we knew when we all started office on January 1st, or at least a two, a couple of weeks in, that we were all, this, it was gonna be hard? We knew that. We knew it was gonna be hard. Um, did we, did we look at the impact on certain, um, certain departments to see if there was a way to do that? Um, I know certain departments have, you know, two, three, four people doing similar jobs. We got payroll in multiple departments. We got this in other departments. Did we do that? And if not, um, what is your, because this is not gonna get better. And, because I'm gonna recommend stepping down the numbers over time. But what was done, how did we get to the 10% instead of really eval, did we do any evaluations?
Now, the, the 10% was a knee-jerk reaction. We never figured that was the, the total answer.
Okay.
But in other, in, in response, in response to your other question, you look around City Hall, and we are fairly well streamlined. In the one, uh, department, we have one administrator that handles both legal and human resources, one administrator for that. In, uh, planning and code compliance, we have one administrator that handles everybody. In my office, I have one administrator, and I have the promised scholarship director that handles two, two jobs. So when, when I put the hiring trees on, that really didn't, that was mostly aimed at the heavy, that the labor-intensive departments like police, fire, park department, because park department employs a lot of people, but that's a source of revenue for us. So, uh, we haven't had, we, we haven't really put into place any cross-training yet, which I think is a great idea. Uh, but we, we are, we are fairly streamlined in City Hall. When I talk about past spend, uh, excessive spending, uh, I'm talking about, and your council, uh, was a good council, eight to 12. You guys did hit 20%. My council that was 12 to 16, uh, we didn't do very well because we had no communication with Mayor Mayor. It broke down very, very quickly. And everything was done, uh, money was pulled from CDIT, from CAGIT, from other funds to do, to, in, in associated with, in association with the new police station, because Mayor Mayor knew the council would not approve it. So there was, there's a lot of money moved around. And, and it crept up. It crept up to 35%, I think. Now, this, this last administration from 16 to 20, uh, again, same mayor, it, uh, it crept up even higher. I'm not throwing stones at anybody because we gotta, you gotta have communication, control it for us. Now, I, I don't know, uh, I agree with Councilman Chris Wieske when he said, it's scary, uh, not scare tactics. These numbers are scary. They've gotta be looked at, because they're real. Numbers don't lie. And, uh, I remember when I first was elected in 2012, I'd never been a public servant. I thought, well, I gotta get pretty smart pretty fast. So I went in the, in the vault, in the clerk's office, I started looking at the budgets. And I've said this many times, that the first year we had the riverboat, 1997, I don't know if Mr. Chris Wieske was on that council or not, that would have been 96 through 2000, I believe. Four, eight, well, yeah, 96 to 2000. Michigan City's budget increased 50% in one year. Went from 20 million to 30 million. That's the kind of spending that I'm calling excessive and set a bad trend. Uh, we, I, I believe that my number would be, we were, we looked at various numbers, 5, 10, 15, 20. I think 20% that you guys had is something that if, if, if we were to go 20%, we would have to reduce police and fire by five officers apiece. That's not traumatic. And especially if we set the date at which we put in this, into effect, the 2022 budget, it gives us a year to prepare for that.
And.
And that, and that's what I was gonna recommend.
I was just gonna say, to answer your question about the whole budget process and looking, no, that wasn't the first, the 10% cut wasn't the first stab. I mean, the one, the New World has got a budget component within New World. That's where all these reports and these budget worksheets come from. It's, it's designed specifically for cities and towns and schools. So it, it, it has got the whole council, it rolls through each of the processes, because most cities and towns follow the same process. The first go-through, I think Tomiko and Yvonne and I looked at, because we have all these tools, we can create these worksheets that show what they spent last year, what they budgeted this year. And we looked at each departments and each individual line items and made cuts, to the department cuts to begin with. Then Yvonne had an awful time trying to, once again, balance the budget. So we're struggling on, okay, we just have to make a 10, and that was the, the decision to start making, having, you know, having to make, make possibly some 10% cuts across the board. But the first stab we did at it was to look at individual line items in the individual department. So that was done. And we just, we still had to cut more to balance this budget.
So, so what I was gonna suggest, and, um, again, I don't know, can do it in amendment form, it don't matter to me, but, um, I still think this is a 2022 thing. I, I do agree that we still need to keep the other piece of it, which is that 50% um, that goes into, was that the rainy day fund?
Correct.
Until we get to the 6 million? I don't, I, I see that just, that has to happen. We can always come back and get money out of there if we had to. But I, I feel like I, I'm, I'm cool with that part. That part, I'm good with it. We need to build that money up regardless. But with that being said, the 5%, I think is, it's a lot. But I do think that, um, if there was a way for us to step this down, 2022, 2023, 2024, um, that's kind of what we, we did, and I thought it was reasonable. Um, he did have to make some changes in, um, personnel. But again, that's up to them to do that. I just think it's, it's, it's extreme to go from where we're at with the pa, with the budget, what we've decided and what has been discussed, to, to kick it that, that far down. Now, if we want to kick it that far down, I still think it's 2022. And I still think it's more like 25%. And then it's 20%, and then it's 15%. Um, but that's just, just, that's just in my eyes. That's not saying that.
Well, I, I, I agree with that. And like I said, when, uh, I proposed this, I didn't think it was.
We, we had a basic discussion.
Right. I didn't think it was perfect, and I knew it would need work, and I knew that it takes the input of everyone. So this was basically a conversation starter. If we know that it needs to get down to 20 or 15 ultimately, and that's about as lean as we can get it, having a conversation with five out there just got us going in the right direction. And as far as the 50% into the riverboat fund, uh, with the proposed for 2021, the, uh, uh, estimated revenues, I guess, uh, of, of $9,750,000, half of that would be $4,875,000. So with the $1 million that the mayor will put in it, that will put it at 500, 800, 5,875,000. So we'd be 125 or 225.
We said 6 million, right?
Right. So with just one year, and what the mayor already added, we'd be 225,000 or 125,000 away from reaching 6 million. And then 100% of the riverboat is back accessible, and we'll have a $6 million reserve. So it's only a year with this projection that you guys gave us.
Okay, but you gotta remember, Mr. President, we got some, there's no fat in the 2021 budget.
No.
Capital, uh, purchases were not included in that. I've already been approached by fire to reframe a fire truck.
No, I get that.
By police, they've wrecked, they've wrecked eight cars. They need some new cars.
I'm using your numbers. So the number.
No, I'm just talking about upcoming, that, that are gonna go before you.
Yeah.
Oh, so there won't be any, so, so to get to the 6 million, we don't have to, it doesn't have to happen, I mean, necessarily that fast.
If we, if we began a practice of moving 50%.
Could be 25%.
Council, uh, Attorney Myers, if at any time we decide, okay, we need some of this out of this before it gets to the 6 million, we have the authority to make that decision at any time, correct?
Yes. The, the money in the rainy day fund is expendable whenever the council approves it for any legal purpose of the city.
Okay, so using the numbers that Mary Lynn, uh, Deputy, I'm sorry, Deputy Controller Wall just presented to us, they're estimating we get $9,750,000 in riverboat revenue. They're expecting to transfer $3,191,975. If we took 50% and put that into the rainy day fund, it would come out of, uh, they would still have 408, 4,875,000 left. So there would still be extra money that will be available for you guys to use without, uh, saying we can't move money and start building a rainy day fund. This is with the numbers that you just gave us.
But, but all I would say is, I wouldn't want to get into a situation where we're always pulling from the rainy day fund either. I, if, if, if we could just say, okay, we know that we want to put 25% in, or 30%, whatever those numbers, I don't have my, my calculator here. Over the next three years, we want to get to 6 million, and we want to, you know, be, um, conservative, and we just say 30%. At least, we can leave that alone and still have some money left if they need to come for appropriations. I think if we, we, if we create a rainy day fund, we want it to be just that. We don't want to start dipping in it for every little thing either.
So, yeah, there was, with what they give us, it would still be 1,683,000 for appropriations available. Uh, Councilman Dabney?
Thank you, that's all I have.
Councilman Dabney?
So, when this, this, uh, this ordinance was originally brought up, I was talking about to just, and I, I used the phrase, to jerk the car all the way to the left to get down to 5% would be devastating right off the top. So now, here we are talking about constantly working back. And that's what I said way back in, I don't remember when this, the first time this was brought up. And you also have to think of that the same way in terms of getting up to 6 million. Um, that should be put in money over time until we get up to 6 million. Uh, because if you look at it, we're talking about the general fund, $3.1 million or so, uh, that was, that had, uh, riverboat, uh, money to help out here. But there was also 753,000 that had to match the motor vehicle fund, or that goes away. Um, I'm going off the top of my head here, $80,000 to fund the airport, or that ends up in the red. And we'll be back at the end of the year making a transfer to that, because you can't end the year in the red. Uh, there was at least 750 to support the parks and wrecks.
Yeah.
Department, which if we, you know, we have to be at the end of the year making more transfers to cover that, to keep it out of the red. Uh, the cemetery was $100,000. Um, that, once again, if they don't have that 100 grand to subsidize what they're doing, we will be back at the end of the year to make a transfer to subsidize that. Um, I think I'm missing one. I think I, I ran off all of them. The golf, was it 140?
I think 130.
140. So, once again, we would let golf run all year in the red, and then we'd be right back at it at the end of the year, making transfers, uh, just like we did, uh, at the end of, uh, last year. Okay. Uh, and, and, and every year, we have to see where they are before we have to make a decision whether or not to let it go into the red and get beat up again by the State Board of Accounts, who audits all of these accounts. So, in my mind, like I said, the very first time this ordinance came up, the only way to get down to that is to step down over time, and then to get up to 6 million in the rainy day fund, we would have to step up over time. So we could look at the, the, we could look at the budget at the end of the year. We can look at the amount of dollars in the riverboat fund, and as a council agree, say, hey, we, let's put 500,000 in the rainy day fund. Hey, we might have a year where we can say, hey, we can throw 2 million in there. We can look at it as a council and come together and say, hey, we can throw 3 million in there. And I'm just saying, why are we coming with these hard numbers like that? Because, like I said, the, the way it sounds, or the way it looks, by dealing with, you know, what we have right now, we will be at the end of the year making transfers to cover those different funds to keep them from going in the red.
But, see, that falls back to the leadership of the chief executive. If he's checking his department heads quarterly, uh, biannually, and noticing that things are creeping up, that's when you wait, you pull the reins back at that point. You don't wait until the ship is sinking to start bailing water. That, that, that makes no logical sense at all. And we were referencing, uh, previous administrations. I mean, for the entire time, I mean, Deputy Controller Wall, were you in the controller's office over the last eight years?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, and also, uh, Controller Hoffmaster was the deputy controller through some of those years as well, correct?
Correct.
So if these things that you guys have been noticing for years and haven't said anything to the chief executive about, or had no chief executive who was willing to even have the discussion, it seems like Mayor Perry is at least open to the conversation to figure out, you know, where to plug the leaks at. I mean, from your guys' perspective, what have you guys been doing to make these, to kind of sound alarms?
Yeah, and, and actually, now we've instigated each month, uh, the department heads are sending over to Yvonne their budget performance report, and they're supposed to be reviewing, which we did, and I admit, in years past, we didn't have, they, they would probably in years past, we didn't have, they, they would probably look at their budget performance report in December. Oh my gosh, I need to transfer some money, I need it. But every month, department heads are sending over to the Controller's Office an analysis of their budget performance report. So we did incorporate that this year.
I see, I definitely, I can appreciate that, because it seems like you guys aren't asleep at the wheel anymore.
And that-
Correct.
You're, you're going in the right direction to make sure that these things don't continue to happen. But to, to say that we shouldn't make these hard decisions now as the council is still giving too much, too much leeway for something to get out of whack. I think if we do these hard decisions, maybe the 5% is too much right now. I don't believe the 50% is. It's a discussion we hopefully don't have to say any further of this, and we do have some other things on the agenda, and I guess we'll have to wait till Tuesday and vote on it, or when it's time to vote on it, but is there any other discussion on?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Councilman.
First of all, Mary Lynn, thank you very much for this report. Yeah, I went to Mary Lynn yesterday afternoon, and we were talking about this, and got Yvonne on the phone as far as breaking it down percentage-wise, and what effect it would have on the city, because I thought that was only the, the common sense approach by going from 20 to 15, 10 to 5, due to stair-step philosophy, to see exactly what effect it'll have on the city. Because I don't think anybody knew exactly what effect it would have on the city. So in order to make an educated decision on this ordinance, you gotta have the information in front of you. I agree that we should do a stair-step approach. I would like to see, if possible, we're at 33, you know, go 25, 20, 15, and 10, or if we could go to 20, what effect that would have in, in a couple of years, and get back to the original ordinance, and, and go from there, and then start working in, in a direction. And if we see three years down the road that 15% or 10% is too much of a reach to try to cut it that much and still operate the city, then, you know, we know where we stand, but we could at least start in a direction. And that's gonna be my discussion on, on Tuesday. And as far as the rainy day fund goes, I think the rainy day fund, you know, it's, it's a good, it's a good idea. Exactly why no money ever got put into it, I can't directly answer that question. But, you know, we could have either put money in there, or we always had at the end of the year, we basically had the $7,000, or $7 million in a riverboat account at the end of the year, until last year, when we had the financial issue. So, you know, there was money to be spent, whether it was on a special project for the community, like is with the parks, and money was spent on parks, whether it was spent on brand-new fire equipment, money was spent on brand-new fire equipment, whether it was spent on brand-new squad cars, there were brand-new squad cars, equipment for the police department, I believe we have one of the best-equipped police departments in northern Indiana. Every one of our police officers has a camera that they have, both in their car and a body camera. And we're the only police department in La Porte County that has that. The Sheriff's Department doesn't even have that. So money's been spent out of the riverboat, understand that. I think we've spent it all on good things. I don't think anybody that's been on the council can say that we've wasted any money, but now it's a new day, and the deal is, the deal is now, whatever mistakes were possibly made in the past, that's behind us, and we gotta go in a new direction and be more physically responsible and move on from there. Because it doesn't do any good to sit here and start pointing fingers back and forth, day in and day out. To me, that's non-productive. I mean, I can point fingers all I want, but it doesn't do me any good. So it's hard to get things done when you're pointing fingers all the time. So on a positive note, I think the ordinance is a good idea. I think there's too much, too soon, and rainy day fund, to fund that is a good idea.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Prisbalinski.
I, I want to get to some, some things that were said by the mayor earlier about the budget process, and also taking a position on right-of-way cutting the police and fire. And I will say this, there's no way that Paul A. Prisbalinski is gonna sit here and say we're gonna defund the police department or the fire department, one of the main two things that people pay taxes for in the city of Michigan City. I think it's irresponsible for that statement to be made to the council and to the general public, and it's a scare tactic. Now, the other comment I'm gonna make, when I was on the city council, we spent a lot of money on new vehicles, new equipment with the riverboat fund. Mr. Councilman Simmons knows, he was the chief when I was on the city council, and, and, that's right, that money was in the budget, and we spent a ton of money on infrastructure, separating sewers, and that money was in the general fund, in the budget. And I'm proud to say, when I was on the city council, that 15 to 18 million dollars was spent in the second ward on infrastructure. Go down Hoyt Street, go down Buffalo Street, that have curbs and gutters now. There, so there's a lot of work, so that statement is ingenuous in itself. And I believe that I left office in 1996, Mayor. So I'm not gonna sit here and point fingers, and I don't think you should start either. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Was there any further discussion before we move on to the, the next items? Okay, so the next things were the, the budget issue, so the salaries and wages, I think most of this is referencing the, the 27th week. But I think, and, who wants to start with that? Councilwoman Tillman.
Okay, in regards to 2021 being a calendar year with 27 pay periods, the question was posed, will we take the 27 and pay for that extra pay period, or take the 27 and divide it into their current salaries? And based off of the worksheet that was provided to the finance committee, the 27 pay period was added into the actual salaries, which incre- it, it was, it was-
In the budget.
In the budget, which shows the salaries as an increase into their salaries. So, because going back and forth with the Controller's Office and other those that was present, that question, should we do include the 27 or pay the 27, the extra pay period? So I reached out to State Boards of Accounts, and per talk, Hatwell, CFE of the Directors of Audit and Services, I posed that question. One moment. And his response, replied back to me was, "Thank you for your email, the answer to your question. If the proposed budget adds the 27 pay, would that signify a pay increase?" Yes. "But may depend on the wording in the city's salary ordinance, and if the city goes with the proposal that was different than what you proposed, the city would not necessarily revert back to the original salary amount for 26 pays." Which I specifically asked that question to Controller Hoffmaster, that if we include the 27 pay peer into the salary, into the budget, which is in their salary, at the end of 2021, going into 2022, will she convert the salaries back to the original pay? Into the budget? She said yes, but however, how do, how, what assures us that that is what's going to be implemented other than when we have our next budget hearing to make sure that that doesn't occur?
Correct, if you had, if you had a-
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, yeah, if you had a, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mary. Mary, one moment. So with that being said, so then, again, it depends on how the salary ordinance is worded. So I would take the stance and err on the side of the SBOA, State Boards of Accounts, recommendations of taking the 27 pay period and dividing it into the salaries. And since we're talking about cutting instead of laying off or furloughing individuals as far as overflows in departments, this will also be a benefit if you just take their actual budget salary and divide it by the 27 pay periods instead of increasing, and say, notify the employees that there's going to be a reduction in their pay due to that there is a 27 pay period in that year.
I was just giving, and I just want to throw this out for thought, whether or not this makes sense to anybody. So, and I'm one of the, I get a bi-weekly pay. When a salaried employee starts work with the city of Michigan City, let's say he or she starts on a Wednesday in the middle of a pay period. We have to take their pay and compute it to a daily rate, and that salaried employee is only paid for the days that he or she worked in that pay period. When that salaried employee leaves employment, we calculate a daily pay, and that salaried employee is only paid up until, sorry, good pop. Up until he or she leaves employment. They never get a full year, I mean, in, in that, in that circumstance. My pay is based on an 80-hour work week, I continue, for two weeks. Bi-weekly pay is kind of based on an 80-hour, two-week pay period. I can honestly say I work a lot more than 80 hours, and I don't get paid overtime. But my, so my bi-weekly pay, I don't believe should really change. I'm just gonna get the same bi-weekly pay, and if you look in the, in the payroll system, there's also an hourly rate computed, in case it has to, that, if, if, if we were to change and divide it up by 27, my bi-weekly pay would be decreased, and my hourly rate would go de- would be decreased, which, if that's a decrease that just all salaried people are gonna have to take in their pay. I know the comment was made that on a W-2, yes, for a salaried employee, if that's all they get paid was their salary, your W-2 will be increased, so will an hourly pay per, a pay worker. I don't know if I said that right. So if somebody works a 40-hour work week, and they don't get any overtime, their W-2 is also going to be increased when, in 2021, did they get an increase in pay? No, they're still making that same $16 an hour. They just got, so their W-2 is gonna be reflected, so I, I disagree.
So are you saying State Boards of Accounts as well?
Well, we actually stepped out to the Board of Account, State Board of Accounts also, and they said, just as, as long as your salary order is worded at a bi-weekly rate, that's what they would recommend. This is the state, and I know Yvonne's reached out to the State Board of Accounts also. They recommended that the salary order be listed as a bi-weekly pay, and that's how most cities in town.
And understandable, and I as well work for the county, and we also adhere to SBOA, and with the 27 pay peers, we are also as well bi-weekly. And the county took the stance, they take the 27 and divide it by their budget salaries, and notify the employee, all salaried employees, that there was going to be a decrease. I don't understand, since the city, per Controller Hoffmaster, every so many years when this occurred, we're flip-flopping, so we need to take a stance in moving forward, then if the ordinance needs to be presented opposed to the policy that was implemented by the Board of Works to indicate that the 27 pay should be-
And I think it, it is a budget issue, so obviously you have to increase your budget, and if your budget, and we, we presented a balanced budget with that amount in there. So if your budget, so I could see where maybe a city in town would be, maybe they didn't realize about this 27th pay, they couldn't absorb the 27th pay, so they made the decision to cut the set, cut the pay for salaried employees because of the 27th pay, because they could not incorporate it into their budget. We did.
Can I ask a question?
That's, that's just mine.
At the, at the time of hire, everyone with the city, are they being hired based on an hourly rate, a bi-weekly pay rate, or annual salary?
A bi-weekly pay rate, like I said, and, and it gets to, they only, and the salaried employees are only getting paid for the days that they worked in that pay period with the first week that they're hired.
So if, if I was to apply for a job to the city, I would be told, okay, for this position, Mr. Fitzpatrick, your bi-weekly pay will be $2,000. That's how it's presented?
I, I don't know how it's necessarily presented. I think it's an annual, and that's converted to a bi-weekly, and if you're bi-weekly pay, but, but if you only, but you're only gonna get-
So it starts as an annual, correct.
An annual, yeah, usually you buy your annual salary, and then you could, I mean, you could still take the, there's 52 weeks in the year, multiply that by two, I mean, there are a lot of different ways to kind of compute a bi-weekly pay. But you're still, should only get paid for the hours, the days that you work in that particular pay period. And that's based on an 80-hour work week.
Councilwoman Deitch.
What if, if I received my letter, and I got hired, it's gonna have an annual salary. My expectation is, I'm gonna be paid that salary, and I don't know, I, I really like what you, you sent out, Michael, Councilman Mack, but just coming from a different perspective, I, I was notified, like I said, when 27 pay period, they sent out a notification to all of us, said, look, be prepared, your pay is gonna go down every two weeks for this year, for that 27th pay period, and they notified us, and you planned for it, and that's it. It went down, you know, whether it's $6, $6, $20, $25, $30, whatever it is, it went down every two weeks to justify, you know, but again, it's 27, you know, it's across 27 pay periods, it's not like we're taking a, you know, a full check, you're still getting a check every two weeks. We're making, we're making like, we're making like, somebody's not gonna get a paycheck on that 27th week, and they are. It's just that across the year, your check isn't as much, and I just know that the expectation, and I don't know about people in the public, but if you're a salaried employee, that's what it is, is not bi-weekly pay. I'm not, unless you guys are gonna go to an hourly pay rate or whatever for everybody, you know, and after I've thought about it, and not being on the finance committee, you know, that salary ordinance should be separated by salaried employees and hourly employees, quite frankly. It should be two different things, but that's neither here nor there. I mean, I think that's something that's just gonna have to go to the council. I think we're gonna be split on, on that particular item. It's gonna have to be pulled out. I think that some of us, some of us are gonna be for 27 split, and some are gonna be for leave it in.
But I think how Yvonne said, I think, and possibly, I don't know, it's handled both ways, I just know in the world before, where, where I worked before, it was, and we always got the same bi-weekly pay. And you just have to incorporate it into your budget, and the bi-weekly pay did not change.
And when we say that, you know, you incorporate it, well, we ain't got, we don't have the money. We keep, keep saying we can incorporate because we can absorb it, but quite frankly, we really don't have any money. We're using riverboat money to, to take care of it, and I'm just saying that, I know in the county, I don't know what other, the other municipalities are doing within our, our, our county, like schools and all this, but they, they split it by 27. And my brother, I mean, he works for the county, he don't make a whole lot of money, but it's split between 27 weeks. And, and I think that looking at that list of who's on that salary list is us, the council people, and department heads primarily, right?
Me, 13 to 15.
Yeah, and I'm like, there's been times I had to put in 100, 120 hours. I still got the same pay, I made McDonald wages when I did it. It's just part of the job, it's the salary employees, and most of the salary employees make more than the rest of the people. So it's not like these are $20,000 jobs, they are $50,000 jobs. So, that's, that's all I got to say.
Since you referenced the $50,000, I did a little math right here, so this is pre-tax, this is gross, so $50,000, a bi-weekly pay would be roughly $1,923 for 26 weeks. At the 27-week division, it would be $1,851, so about 70 or so dollars of pay period, about $150 a month, so this is the, the numbers we're, we're really talking about. And I guess as it tails down, $150, as it tapers down in salaries, I mean, $50,000 is about the going rate for department heads, from what I looked at to the budget, so that's where the impact would be mostly, and tapering down, if it was at $30,000 position. it would be eleven hundred and fifty-three a pay period, and that would go down to eleven hundred and eleven dollars. So these are not drastic measures that we're proposing or that would be adjustments. It, it's not like it's gonna be like five hundred dollars a paycheck.
So a hundred and fifty dollars a month.
That's, that's for someone making, that's for someone making fifty thousand dollars a year.
That's our, our judgment, everybody's judgment to say that's not a drastic cut for everybody. Uh, everybody's in different financial situations, and then I just pointed out the fact that the fire department and the police department are still getting their twenty-seven pays because they're union. So now our regular employees are just being treated differently. That's all I'm.
They're not union. I mean, like I said at the council meeting, maybe they should organize if they want the same.
In a right-to-work state?
Collective bargaining, well, I mean, right, it's just the salary people, so.
Now, I'm asking the question, but do those salary people work the hours?
Yeah, salary people work the hours. And so the hourly people, but their, their pay is based on an hourly rate. The salary people, their pay is based on an annual salary. That shouldn't change because there's an extra pay period. The salary should be divided, I mean, I think the salary should be the same, whether it's twenty-seven weeks or twenty-eight weeks or twenty-five weeks. On a twenty-five-week year, they'll get a pay increase bigger. It'll be more, so. As, I, I bet no one will line up to say, "Well, adjust my pay for the annual." No one do it then.
So I, I know some places pay like on the first and the fifteenth, so if that was the case here, there would be no issue. I mean, you could stop the budget, the budget would incre, the budget would be more for that year. But it would still be, it'd be the same, you could still take the annual, so.
Okay, it's not our job or responsibility to assess everyone's individual personal financial situations. That's their personal business. Our job is to manage and be fiscally sound with the revenues of the city of Michigan City. And that's the only perspective I'm coming from. I, my personal finances is not everyone's business or how I, if I'm in debt up, up to my ears or if I have cash sitting in the bank. That's really no one's business and it's not the business of us as the city to say, "Well, Councilman Fitzpatrick needs extra money, so let's not take his extra pay." I mean, I could take a raise if you just wanted to give me more money, but no one's proposing that.
Yeah.
Uh, Councilman Presley.
Um, you know, I think that, if I need to be corrected, um, I want to ask Councilwoman Tillman, did, did the SOB, I mean, excuse me, Division of Government Finance, Department of Government Finance, did they say that if the pay is issued, it is then incorporated in next year's budget as a raise? Is that a correct interpretation?
Per their response via email, the answer to your question is, "If the proposed budget adds the twenty-seven pay, would that signify a pay increase?" Probably yes.
Okay.
Uh, could you, um, could you forward that email to us?
Of course.
Yeah, great. Just like to see it. Okay.
So there's a lot of, uh, things going on here, but, but I want to revert back to this. Nobody's been laid off, nobody's been, or I, I guess maybe some people were furloughed. I don't know, I never saw a list, you know, during this COVID thing and who wasn't, who wasn't, or who was working at home and who wasn't, whatever, but things were still getting done. But, uh, you, you know, uh, I went nine years without a pay raise, all right? I went nine years without a pay raise. And I will tell you this, I was, and we were in tough economic times and I was glad to have a job that I could support my family. And sometimes, you know, as, and I'm appreciating the comments that Councilman Mac made tonight, we are supposed to be a team. So sometimes you gotta take one for the gipper, all right? And with that being said, we need to go and tell the employees, I don't have a problem going and telling the employees, "Hey, here's the deal. You're only getting paid for twenty-five weeks or twenty-five, or, um, excuse me, for twenty-five pay periods and that you're not getting that tw, that extra pay this year." That they're, you know, that's the bottom line. Or, or there's another alternative. The administration can start, start telling people they're gonna be working four-day weeks. They're gonna figure out who's gonna work a four-day week and that's, they can figure it out. But some way or another, and I'm talking about across the board, we need to save money. We need to save money. And I want to ask, how much would it save the total budget if people were given a four-day work week? How many times to get to the point and the salaried people don't get a pay increase? How much would we save for the year? Seven hundred thousand? Wasn't that the figure that was incorporated on the, the gross amount on the increase in pay? So with that being said, we have eight squads that have been wrecked, that cars need to be replaced, and we need a fire truck or two that need to be replaced because when you get into replacing a frame, you're talking about taking the whole truck apart. So if we want to get to where we need to go, there needs to be some stuff, uh, tough discussions in front of us besides putting maybe a percentage on the monthly allotment out of the riverboat into this, into this fund. So every month, we know we're getting a percentage going into the rainy day fund without the language of the gadget tax and all this other stuff that's supposed to be going in there. And, you know, things were spent and we can't go back there, but we ne, we gotta look, go forward and say, "Well, this is what we're doing for the city for financial stability." And so people do have a job and they, you don't have a bunch of layoffs. So, you know, I'm not gonna get into saying that next year's gonna be great because I don't know if it is gonna be great. So we, we gotta take some drastic steps. And that's why we got elected, to explain what we have to do and to make those decisions to do what we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, Councilman Mac.
Uh, two things, uh, I would like to read into the record the, uh, the letter that, uh, Ms. Nelson referred to so that the public, I'm, I'm trying to clarify this for the public because sometimes salary, uh, conversations can be difficult. And, uh, if you haven't been a salaried person, uh, I have most of my life and a lot of you have, I'm sure. Um, it, 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 it depends on how you look at it. But the first question I wanted to ask was to Ms. Tillman, that, that question that you asked the state, um, I, I would be curious, is their answer predicated on, you know, the question was, "Would that signify a pay increase?" Now, when I hear that question, the first thing I think of is for next year or forever. I would, I would distinguish between asking that question. So if I just ask them, "Is a pay increase?", it's possible that they were thinking like, "For, for next year, yes, it's a pay increase." But if I ask them, "Is, does that signify a pay increase for every year in perpetuity?", I got a feeling they would give a different answer. And I, I, that, that's the part that I wasn't sure, that I wanted to ask you, uh.
And I did post that in that manner, and that was the reply. And to continue on, it says, "But may depend on the wording in the city's salary ordinance. And if the city goes with the proposal that was different than what you proposed, the city would not necessarily revert back to the original salary amount for twenty-six pays." Again, it may depend on how the salary ordinance is worded.
Okay, but the Board of Works, did they do a salary ordinance? I mean, because as far as I'm thinking, there was an actual ordinance.
They did a policy. We, we.
Which just says, uh, we're gonna, does it more or less say anything other than we're gonna budget for the dollar amount that's inclusive of twenty-seven weeks one time?
Um, if I'm not mistaken, don't quote me per word, but it, it just, it was only two lines and it said that it would, that they're incorporating that due to that there's a twenty-seven pay period, that it will reflect for 2021. That was all.
Okay, but, uh, yeah, I hope I didn't muddy it up. But, uh, and I just want to quickly read, uh, the letter that I wrote to the council to, uh, just express my desire that these twenty-seven weeks, uh, be paid to the employees. Uh, I started at the Lighthouse Mall as a twenty-something, low twenty-something thousand dollar assistant manager. And if I took my hourly rate, I was the lowest paid person in, in the building. And when I was the manager at Best Buy, traveling the country, I was the lowest paid person in the building, uh, being salary. And, uh, so maybe I'm, uh, jaded here. But, uh, I'm gonna express my logic, uh, in favor of leaving the twenty-seventh week of pay for Michigan City's salaried employees alone and allowing them to be paid for the hours' work. Number one, there really is an extra week here in reality, the, the week can't be argued. Uh, number two, the mayor is just attempting to look out for his employees. And it can also be said on the flip side that we are looking out for the taxpayer, which is cool and honorable, but for me, this is not the issue or the manner by which we show the taxpayer how serious we are on fiscal matters. This issue is relatively small, extremely rare, and should have been put to bed decades ago. We need to pass legislation answering this question permanently. And the crop of innocent salaried personnel should not be required to pay for our inability to, uh, come to a conclusion, and that's all past councils. If we do nothing, that extra week is gonna come and those very few people will be paid for their work just like everybody else in the country. Uh, we know it's coming, so it got, it has to be, it must be funded. It can't be ignored and it's not relevant to each employee's employment contract that has a dollar amount listed as a salary. That dollar amount will not change in 2022 or 2023 on that contract. Uh, if we proactively intervene to stop them from receiving the extra week of pay that is coming and that they will work, then I feel we're harkening back to that old standard of what salary positions used to be a long time ago and holding these people, holding them accountable to that old standard. Uh, Obama had passed legislation that I agree with wholeheartedly on this issue. What he did was take a large portion of people and made them hourly. Uh, the standard, uh, which then meant they could get overtime for every hour worked over forty. It was one of the first things that Republicans killed when Trump was elected. And, uh, in this letter, I, uh, referred to an article, uh, on a news site, but anybody that's interested can go, uh, Obama's Salary Proposal, and I'll give you in-depth on that. Uh, "SalARY EMPLOYEES STILL HOLD A SIGMA, STIGMA AND REPUTATION OF WORK AND POSITION THAT IS NO LONGER EVEN CLOSE TO THE TRUTH. A salary position now is mostly used as a way to avoid paying overtime to a person that's really entitled to it. In the private sector, it is terrible for those in the fifty thousand dollar area and is flat-out wrong and unethical in the lower retail and management sectors. Employers are free to schedule any hours to these people with no rights whatsoever. Uh, back in the day, a salaried person was implied to be management, a part of a big bonus structure, a part of shareholders and profit sharing. We all know that is no longer true. A retail manager and millions of other assistant and management employees' positions, sixteen, sixteen bucks an hour are now salaried positions with weak benefits and high expectations on hours and being away from family. It's a way to use and abuse low and moderate wage employees through scheduling." Now, some could make the argument that these people work no overtime or that these people are already overpaid or that these people don't do this or that to some standards, uh, which is mainly why I'm forgiving them to pay for the time they're gonna work. I know nothing about any of their productivity attendance, teamwork, team building, networking, effectiveness, character, or a host of other evaluation facts that I would need before assuming that someone does not deserve pay for hours worked. I have no choice but to honor the decision of those people that do have that inform, information. And I would demand it if these were my, if it was my employee. Uh, if we were to ever create a policy or make a decision to help fifty people on the lower income scale and require it to benefit six high-income earners, I'm doing it. Uh, moving the needle long-term is the goal. Fighting argument to argument, situation to situation with no grounded logic, theory or direction is exactly how we ride here as a country. Uh, our inability to get back to larger truths is killing the democracy. Uh, there was a term back in the day that says it's better to let a thousand guilty go free before one innocent is convicted. It's similar to something called Blackstone's Ratio. Is it better to have twenty thousand innocent people in jail or twenty thousand guilty people go free? A very similar argument is on this issue. These few people that would derive a small, one-time benefit by deviating from old unfair salary position logic are not the bad guys in this situation. We were elected by Democrats to pack pairs of Indiana, and of course, we're to look out for the taxpaying citizens of our area, all of them. But is this the best way to do that? Is this to become, are, are, is this to become that type of an employer? Uh, let us put an end to this one way or another through some form of ordinance that allow the next council, a decade or more from now, to at least have confidence that this issue was discussed, studied and deliberated before they just make something up, you know, like we've had it handed to us. The current crop of people going through this age-old issue shouldn't be the poster children for our inaction, short or long term. So with that said, that was the letter I sent. I'm pretty passionate on the issue. I will always be passionate on people getting paid for the hours they worked. And when I gave somebody a salary back in the day, be it thirty, forty, fifty, sixty, when I was a manager, my intent was basing that on fifty-two weeks in a year. Um, if the accounting department didn't tell me the next year was fifty-three weeks, then I was disingenuous in my offer because my intent was to pay them for fifty-two weeks in a year. There's, there's no other way that a manager or a hiring person could actually come to any other conclusion. And when, if a, if a year fell at fifty weeks in a year, they would, you know, would we retroact, would we take it back? Uh, so that's, I'm, I'm pretty passionate on it, so obviously, you know, I'm gonna be voting on it, so. Thank you. That was all.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Tillman.
Um, just real quick, um, to give the exact wording, um, to the question of Councilman Mac, the Policy and Procedure Manual Section Compens, Compens, Compensation Policy Pay Day, Policy Number Four Zero One, Effective One One Two Thousand Four, Revised September Eighth, Twenty Twenty. Employees are paid biweekly at twenty-six periods per calendar year on a Friday through electronic funds transfer. For payroll purposes, the work week begins on Sunday and ends Saturday. When days of the year falls as such that they allow a twenty-seven pay period, employees shall receive twenty-seven biweekly pays. That's all that it states.
We should get twenty-seven biweekly pays.
That's twenty-seven biweekly pays, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's what she just said. So we should be twenty, we should be paying.
Mike.
Sorry, that was according to the policy that the Board of Works passed in September.
Yeah, okay, that sounds reasonable.
I get twenty-seven biweekly pays out of fifty-three weeks. Shouldn't be fifty-four weeks. I don't know, just asking. Uh, was there any more discussion on that? Okay, uh, I guess I want to thank everyone for coming out. I do want to say that this was not an attempt to, uh, attack the mayor or his administration. Uh, early on, I do, I, you know, was very, uh, proud and encouraged by Mayor Perry's decision to cut all capital expenditures and place a hiring freeze. So I do know that Mayor Perry is being proactive in making sure that we don't fall to the same fate that we had, uh, in previous years. So we do know that going forward, we're just trying to make sure that we are putting the right legislation in place to make sure that we have to adhere to it. So, uh, with that being said, I wanted to say good night to everyone and thank you for participating.